We will now call the general session of the Ridgefield Planning Commission to order. If everyone could please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, if you wouldn't mind doing the roll call, roll call.
Commissioner Glavine?
Present.
Commissioner Mullenix?
Present.
Commissioner Amerman? Commissioner Flynn?
Present.
Commissioner Butler? Commissioner Tyler?
Present.
And Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you. I understand Commissioners Butler and Amerman are excused tonight. If we could have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor of excusing them from tonight's meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Lust, are there any late changes to the agenda?
There are no late changes. Thank you.
Then we'll move on to the first of our public comment periods. Now is the time for public comment. Anyone requesting to speak to the commission may request to speak at this time. If you've not provided notice in advance to speak during the public comment period, please use the raise hand feature and the clerk will send you permission to unmute your microphone so that you're able to make your comments. If you're on the phone, press star nine for raise hand and press star six to mute and unmute. And if you're in the audience, you may come to the podium. Is there anyone wishing to make a public comment at this time? Anyone on the Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Okay. This time we will close the first public comment period. Move on to the consent agenda. Did everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting? And if so, have any changes they'd like to note? Not hearing anything. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minute?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the minutes from the March 5th, 2025 meeting? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will abstain.
That makes sense. I believe the motion would still carry. Is that with four of us?
Correct.
Perfect. Motion carries. And now we'll move on to the business portion. I'll turn the time back over to Ms. Lust.
Perfect. Thank you Chair Tyler. Good evening to the commission and members of the public. This evening, we're having more of a discussion, presentation, work session, no action being requested. So in March, we held a couple of study sessions with city council on three topics. That'll be part of our comprehensive plan in Vision Ridgefield 2045. Those are economic development, housing, and climate. These are all required elements of the comp plan under state statute, under the Growth Management Act. And so really what we're gonna do tonight is go through each of those three topics, go through some draft goals and policies our project team has developed. And I'd like to offer the opportunity for our planning commissioners to chime in on those topics and offer your feedback on the draft goals and policies. The full presentation wasn't in your packet, so hopefully you've had a chance to review and make your own notes. But I'll try not to go into like fully reading every single one of these many slides so we can focus more on your time and not my time talking. But as usual, at any time, if you want to jump in with a comment or question, let me know. I'll try to split this up in a way that makes sense to gather some organized feedback. All right. Any questions before we get started? All righty. So the first topic we're gonna look at is economic development. So first, just to hit on a few sort of general background facts for our economic development environment here in Ridgefield. Unsurprisingly, employment has increased pretty significantly in terms of number of jobs. Here, the data's from 2010 to 2021, has continued to grow since. Industrial employment is the largest sector, followed by service and retail. Obviously, we do also have a lot of public sector jobs between the city and the school district as well in Ridgefield. But decent share of Ridgefield residents work from home. And this is something that is really new since the last comprehensive plan update. In the past, the assumption for work from home has been around 4%. And I think we can all know and observe that that is quite a bit different now in 2025 than it was five plus years ago. And that 16% is an area number. We suspect it's closer to 20 plus in Ridgefield. Folks are at least working partially from home, be that for their own business or for another company. This is our overall math for the next 20 years through 2045. The projection is that the Ridgefield city limits and our urban growth area will need to accommodate about 9,300 net new jobs by 2045. And we, plus or minus, have the capacity to do so. So this exercise is more about how than where. All right. With that, we'll jump into some draft goals. So we've drafted up five economic development goals for consideration. And those are sort of the pillars of economic development, job creation, et cetera, in the community going forward. So the first one is develop integrated, high-density, mixed-use hubs that support housing and employment opportunities. So mixed use. And as we've talked through land use scenarios multiple times with this group, as well as with council, this idea of identifying some mixed-use hubs has been pretty constant throughout the process. And obviously has some overlap being mixed between economic development and housing, but is certainly a core aspect of economic development and jobs in Ridgefield moving forward. I'll go ahead and pause if there's any feedback on that. Or I guess I should ask, would you prefer to go through all five of these and then discuss? Or each one? Great. I'll turn it back to you.
Any of the commissioners have any comments or thoughts on this, the first goal here and the policies associated with it?
Looks like we're good with this. I guess I'll, just to clarify, these are Ridgefield goals, not county goals?
That's correct. All of these are our Ridgefield goals. The county will have their own economic development, housing, and climate elements to their comprehensive plan. And it is our responsibility to make sure we're not being inconsistent with those. But these specifically are for the Ridgefield city limits and urban growth area.
Any other thoughts or comments on this first item?
Perfect. We'll move on. Another goal here is to focus on enhanced remote work opportunities, looking at what is within our power to do as the city to improve opportunities for those working from home to be integrated in the community as they do so, fostering a community that supports that type of work as we see it, continue to be a pretty large share of employment in the community. So, remote work.
Any questions or comments on this item from the commissioners?
Maybe one question would be, is there any linkage with location of work and tax revenue? In the sense of wages, et cetera?
Sure. So my understanding is, I hope this answers your question. If someone is living in Ridgefield and working from home for a company in Ridgefield, obviously, we collect that tax revenue. If they're living in Ridgefield and working for a company, say, based in Texas remotely, still our revenue.
How does the city track then individuals who are working from home?
Yeah, we don't have a perfect system for that. We do track business license applications. So people that have their own business out of a home office, we are able to track that. People that are working from someone else from home, we don't have a regular way to track that. We did do a survey in 2024 on exactly that question, just to sort of get a baseline. And we had, gosh, maybe around 400 responses of people saying, yes, I am working at least part of the time from home. So as we move forward, that could be a tracking tool. It's gonna be that type of voluntary response, though, I think, aside from things we can track through business licensing.
And the numbers that you have for, it's an estimate then essentially of how many people are working from home based on that percentage of?
It is. It is an estimate, yeah. So we have the 16% is like an area-wide number. So that's what we can say is sort of a defensible number. Based on that survey we did and just the volume of responses we were getting, I think we can surmise that it's a bit higher in Ridgefield than that average.
Thank you.
Ms. Lust, a couple of questions. One, I see here 4.2.4, the last line there is about broadband internet. Based on our current infrastructure, and I know nothing about how this works, but do we have the broadband capacity to handle X amount of, not just new homes, but people working from home in the next, between now and 2045? Is that infrastructure in place? And I see you're writing that down, so it's totally fine if you don't know.
I am writing that down and I don't know, but it's probably something we can look and do and talk to providers.
Yeah.
And get a better idea.
I know my bandwidth drops way down when school gets out because all the kids get home and start playing Xbox, so. And then, do you know, if someone is working for a company that is outside of Ridgefield, is the company required then to, I mean, if they're in Ridgefield, they're obviously withholding from their paycheck and paying the revenue. But they pay it to the state and then the state disperses it to the city.
I believe that's correct. Not my area of expertise. I'd have to check with our finance director. He usually pipes in over my shoulder on these questions, but I believe that is correct.
I think that's correct too, but if they're out of state, I don't know how that works, especially if they're a smaller company. If someone's working for, you know, whoever, Intel, they probably have the bookkeeping and payroll infrastructure in place to do what they need to do, but I'm betting there's a lot that do not. And then back up a couple of slides to that, the two columns there, county allocation and modified allocation. Seems like the work from home is the big, the only difference.
It's the only difference, yeah.
And so on the left, that's the county's projections and then we're just sort of guestimating. Okay, just making sure I'm understanding that correctly. Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments on this item? Back to you.
All right. This one I might skip over unless there are specific questions. I think we were kind of reworking it already since it is kind of a summary of the other ones, but I will still turn it over to the commissioners if you have specific questions on goal 4.3 as written, which is, has to do with creating jobs at a ratio of one job per household and creating an efficient regulatory environment.
How did you guys come up with that ratio?
So that is, I believe it is in our current comp plan. We did have some conversation with council in our study session about, is that the right number? Because it doesn't have to be. Council wanted to look at something a little higher. So would welcome any feedback from you all as well on that.
I mean, the ratio you have in here, to me, seems high, but I guess I haven't dove into this before to fully understand it.
What is the current ratio? That's what it is. I mean.
I don't have that number.
Yeah.
In front of me.
Didn't you say this is based off of the current comp plan?
Yes. As I understand it, though, the question was, would be, what is the real?
The real life number.
Real life number, yeah.
Well, I guess I would say it'd be good to know that real life number so that we would have a good idea of, is 1.1 or 1, whatever it is that you said is in the comp plan, if that's a realistic number? And if the council is looking for a higher number, then we should probably have some data that helps us make that make sense.
Absolutely.
Do you know how many households are in the city limits?
Yeah, it'd be easy to do the math. If we had, yeah, exactly, households and jobs, which are numbers we do have. I just don't have them in front of me right now.
I have a question just about the, I guess the formatting or structure of this, and this slide might be a good example, where, you know, policy versus goal, or policy that's gonna be used when making land use decisions versus objectives or priorities for staff. Some of these on future slides talk about, it seems like, activity more than a policy. So I guess I'm curious about how these are gonna be, where these go.
So, yeah, it's just sort of increasing levels of specificity. Goal is your highest level, then policy, then action items. And a lot of those action items would be updates to the development code to implement a policy.
So none of these will be used when evaluating land use applications, et cetera?
So there are some land use applications where approval criteria ask us specifically to look at compliance with goals and policies in the comprehensive plan. A zone change is an example of that. For most development proposals, we are reviewing for consistency with the development code. But everything in the development code exists to implement the comprehensive plan goals and policies. So it's just a step removed. But the development code is required to be consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and policies. It's just more specific.
And when staff is being allocated and resources are being deployed towards different objectives, do the managers refer to these types of policies and what their team should be focused on?
So we have work in different areas. A lot of our work is development review. So that's based on volume. I guess I'm not sure how to answer that question because everything we do is under the umbrella of these goals and policies, just in different ways. Most of that work is like applying codes that have been developed to implement these goals and policies in like planning and building review and inspections on projects.
Any other thoughts or comments on this item? Back to you.
All right. The next economic development draft goal really focuses on supporting downtown and waterfront. We've already identified one change that needs to be in here, which is a couple of these only mention one or the other. And really, it should be both. But aside from that, happy to take any comments or ideas for how to create policy that supports Ridgefield's downtown and waterfront as they continue to be a centerpiece of the community.
Ms. Lust, I know Ridgefield Main Street does a lot when it comes to grants for facades and whatnot. Does the city do any of that itself or just in partnership with Main Street?
Most of that work is in partnership with Main Street. We do have a couple provisions for like city-led things. The one that is coming to mind is we do have some provisions for downtown art, supporting art emblematic of Ridgefield's history, nature, culture in downtown. Generally speaking, that is done in, together with Main Street, with the Art Association, with our partners.
Thank you.
Ms. Lust, a quick question on the same thing, actually. With the facade improvements grants for downtown and businesses, who, is there like a oversight on that? Like, I guess this is something that I think people reading this would have questions about, just like on what governs, what people can or can take that money to do, since it's been granted out? Is there like oversight on like what you can do for improvements or is it kind of city-led or?
So right now, the existing facade improvement program is through Ridgefield Main Street. So they have their own control mechanisms on what they're approving and giving money for. We also do have downtown design guidelines that are the backdrop of any work done on a facade downtown. It does need to follow those guidelines as well, and that's a city document.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments from the commissioners on this item? Back to you, Ms. Lust.
All right. The final economic development goal we've drafted here is facilitate large employer job development. And this, we're sort of geographically shifting, right, from our downtown towards, back towards the junction, where we have some of those larger undeveloped parcels, as well as now Clark College Advanced Manufacturing Center is sort of a centerpiece for that type of economic environment.
Ms. Lust, just a quick question on this one here for the limit zone changes from employment uses to residential or other uses. Is there, I'm assuming that there's further detail into this somewhere on what's limiting that? Or, you know, guidelines on how to, when you need to limit and when you don't? I understand why it's there, but is there more to this than that or is this basically the just?
As drafted, that's the policy. The details on that would be the implementation. That would be code language.
Any other thoughts or comments on this item? Okay.
Okay. Is there anything, when you think about economic development in Ridgefield, that we have missed? You can say no, but.
It sounds like you've got it covered.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate the feedback. Have some to-dos in here that we will get to as we work on the next draft. All right. The next topic is housing. Again, this is a required element of all of our comprehensive plans, city, county, other jurisdictions. And again, what we'll be looking at is first a little background information and then some draft housing goals and policies. These are, again, the highest level directives for the next 20 years. So just some unique requirements we're looking at in the cycle of comprehensive plan updates for housing. And this is something we've certainly talked about before in relation to land use as well, is that we are not just planning for housing, but housing affordable to households earning different income levels. And we are looking, we are required to look at identifying, addressing barriers to construction of housing and identifying and addressing barriers that have traditionally kept people from accessing housing. This slide tells a rather obvious story. Ridgefield's population and therefore housing needs and supply are growing. Notable here, and this isn't new, but it is something to just be aware of in the context of housing, is that Ridgefield has a younger population than the state and county as a whole and slightly a larger household size as well, on average.
Ms. Lust, here, the stat you just referenced, and I've seen it a couple of other places. Lessens, we reference what the county is doing or the state is doing and compare those to our numbers. But do we have like a peer group that we would also compare ourselves to in some way?
Yeah, like similarly sized cities in southwest Washington.
Yeah.
Pacific Northwest.
Yeah, I mean, they could be, you know, it could be a suburban Spokane or something too, right? So like a similar, larger city nearby, sort of exurb, can, you know, changing into more suburban kind of a thing. Do we have that?
No, but we definitely could, as part of sort of the comparative and background information here. Typically, we focus on comps within Clark County. But I know we've, we have looked at, like, for example, we were doing a FEAST study recently and we did look at some jurisdictions like around Spokane as comparables. I know for other growth trends, we've looked at Wilsonville, Oregon as a comparable. It's sort of equidistant from, you know, central city as we are. They're just a little bit ahead of us on the growth curve, but we're catching up. So that type of city in our general metro area can be a good comp as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And this is just another picture of housing in Ridgefield. A lot of single-family detached owner-occupied homes, although obviously over the past several years, we've seen more townhomes and multifamily get built, which does tend to be more renter-occupied versus owner-occupied. But still, the lion's share of housing product in Ridgefield was in 2022 and still is, single-family detached.
Ms. Lust, I'd love to see this chart over time as well, to see where we were 10 years ago, 20 years ago.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So draft housing goals and policies. We have three themes here. One is variety, one is affordability, and one is accessibility. So the first one here, goal 5.1, is support a variety of housing types to ensure equitable housing opportunities. So this is focused on housing type. Go ahead and turn it back over.
Yeah, I have a question, a couple of questions. First would be more of a comment on 5.1.4, the verbiage. Is there an extra allowed perhaps?
Perhaps.
And then on 5.1.5, when we talk about accessory dwellings per residential lot and saying to allow it, so how does that take into account the size of the lot?
This one is actually tied to a, a state requirement. Will be required to allow two accessory dwelling units per residential lot within, I believe it's six months of adoption of our comp plan. That can be one attached and one detached. And then the, to answer your question, that's allow. They would still have to meet the standards of the base zone, such as setbacks and lot coverage. So there, there may be lots where it's not possible to get two out of them. But allow is the baseline.
And can you share again, perhaps, how these interact when you have HOAs and specific language in the HOA documents that constrain certain things or control certain things?
Sure. CCNRs are not under our control as the city. That's a, a private agreement amongst the, the homeowners of the community. So, you know, our, our lane is to allow it in our development code.
So the CCNR governs.
We don't, we don't enforce CCNRs.
But the CCNR language trumps, I guess, the language that's in the code.
They are, one is not above the other, they're just, they're separate.
Okay, thanks.
Any, any other thoughts or comments on this item?
All right, we'll move on. The next theme here, goal, is affordability. So looking at strategies other than just zoning, which we're also doing through the land use component, that would encourage housing that is affordable to those different income levels of folks living here in Ridgefield and who want to live here in Ridgefield.
Ms. Lust, is it typical to have policy items that use the verbiage consider?
Yes.
The, because that one, the affordable, can you, can you elaborate on 522? On a little bit more on what that's, what that's saying, because I'm sure there'd be a lot of questions about that.
Sure, so that's one of many established affordable housing incentives. This one in particular is a property tax levy. So this is, you know, pretty specific. We could be more general with policy language of consider XYZ. This is something that I believe would, to be implemented, have to go through voters.
Speaking of the consider policies, I was looking at policy 5.2.4, where it says, "Consider regulating short-term rentals," but it seems a little, I guess, vague about how to regulate them. Is it, reading it under this goal and policy, I'm almost reading it like it would, the, the consideration would be to ban them almost? Because I know the rise of short-term rentals generally removes units from the market and then increases costs. And so is there a, I guess, is this, do you know which way this policy is leaning as far as the regulation?
So regulation, and we can clean it up, does imply limitation. We don't, Ridgefield does not regulate short-term rentals at all. And we've kind of had the question a few times over the years, should we consider regulating short-term rentals? And the answer to date has been no, we just, there aren't that many. Looking over the next 20 years, though, would it be a good idea sometime in our planning horizon to consider regulation? Perhaps, and that's why that's in here. And yes, it would be placing some sort of, of limitations under the policy of this goal. Because there are, you know, communities with a significant number of short-term rentals where that's really had an impact on their, their long-term housing supply.
And just, and would that consideration for regulation also include potential taxes on short-term rentals, like a hotel tax?
That's, that's the how. So yeah, that would be the implementation of it.
Okay.
Ms. Lust, 5.2.1, first word is fully, fully utilize federal and state housing programs. Is that a confession that we are not currently fully utilizing those programs?
Probably, yeah. Yeah, honestly, to date, we've relied more heavily on our partnership with organizations like VHA Vancouver Housing Authority, just because they're much more well-resourced to tackle affordable housing in Ridgefield. Again, looking ahead over the next 20 years as we grow, this would shift more of that responsibility on, onto the city to, yes, fully use those resources within our, within our own power as an agency.
I seem to recall about six or seven years ago, you and I having a conversation very similar to this. And I, I think the list of like federal and state programs was nonexistent. I mean, there was a lot of programs, but there was like nothing that we could even grab on to. I don't know if that's still the case, but I kind of suspect that is the case. If and when this topic ever hits the Planning Commission again, I'd love to have some sort of a, a shortlist of what programs are even out there that we would have a chance to sniff at.
Absolutely.
Any other thoughts or comments on this item? Back to you.
All right, finally, the third proposed housing goal has to do with accessibility. And this sort of covers accessibility in a, in a few senses. One of them, you know, accessibility in terms of universal design and as well as accessibility in terms of equitable and, and fair access.
I have a question on 5.3.1, and can you give an example of how that would be implemented or used? What's it trying to get to?
So, what that policy is saying is that when we create development regulations, we are not intentionally or unintentionally putting regulations in place that would make households less accessible to people with special needs.
Any other thoughts or comments on this item or? And if not, I guess, is, this is the last one, so maybe on housing in general?
Yeah, this is the last one we have drafted. Yes, as with the last topic. Would love to hear any comments on policies or goals we're, we're missing so far that Planning Commission would like to see us consider moving forward. Or just topics.
And just to confirm my, my understanding, the, the, the goal, the, the idea here is that setting these goals and policies are to create the opportunities for these items. Ridgefield doesn't have to guarantee the results of affordable housing. That's, is that correct?
That is correct. Our, our objective is to create capacity. Through our policies, we certainly want to have the, the implementation items that make that actually happen. But at a very basic level, to have an approvable comprehensive plan, these goals and policies are about creating capacity. And they are at that, that high policy level. This is a, a statement of intent, really.
Thank you. Any other thoughts and comments on the housing item and goals in general? Okay.
All right, let's move on. Climate, this one has a little bit more background, mostly because we, it is a new requirement of the Growth Management Act for cities and counties to have a climate element. So I'll go through a bit of that background first. All right, so House Bill 1181 is what we're working under the umbrella of here. And in a very basic sense, it requires a climate element with two sub-elements, one being greenhouse gas emissions reduction and one being climate resilience. We have been fortunate enough to work in an inter-local agreement with Clark County, LeSanne, Camas, Battleground, Washougal, and Yakult. Vancouver doing their own thing on climate planning in Clark County. So we, through that agreement, worked with a couple different consultant teams, one on greenhouse gas emissions and one on climate vulnerability and risk, to come up with some baseline inventories and assessments, both county-wide and for our purposes, specific to Ridgefield. So some quick, high-level results here that should guide our work moving forward. Greenhouse gas inventory locally showed that a lot of emissions come from both building energy and transportation. Some further breakdown of that data for both building energy emissions sources and transportation emission sources. Air travel is kind of the wild card there. So the, the chart on the, pie chart on the left takes that out, pie chart on the right leaves it in. Okay. Next, these are some of the results from the local hazard risk assessment. In general, it does show climate risks increasing over the planning horizon. Those include extreme precipitation, extreme heat, landslides, which are commonly related to extreme precipitation, flooding, drought, and wildfires and smoke. Any questions on any of that baseline data? To add to those statistics, we did an online survey in January and February related to people's personal experience with climate change here in Ridgefield. Sixty-seven responses, not quite the volume of the work-from-home survey responses there, but very appreciative of those who did take the time to engage and respond to that survey. We wanted to learn how folks have been affected by climate hazards in the past, understand what would help them respond and recover in the future, and then just sort of gather any other ideas folks had for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So a lot of people reported experiencing effects from wildfire or wildfire smoke, severe storms, and extreme heat. Some of the more on-the-ground things people were affected by were losing power or internet, disruption to transportation facilities, and having to miss work or school. Overall, about two-thirds of our respondents generally felt somewhat well or well-prepared for projected changes in the severity of natural hazards. Folks felt that things that helped them be prepared, preparation or survival kit, emergency alerts, and some things that people shared would improve their experience in the future would be increased community alerts, road and sidewalk maintenance, disaster preparedness planning, and access to information for how to respond. We asked people what they believe are some people, buildings, area, or services in Ridgefield that might be more vulnerable to natural hazards. And some responses here, particularly elderly community, people with disabilities or medical conditions, and then in terms of areas, nature and open space. Okay, we have quite a few draft climate goals and policies. I believe there are six. And these all seek to meet our requirements under House Bill 1181, which again is split into the two sub-elements of greenhouse gas reduction and climate resiliency. So I'll go ahead and move forward into goal 7.1 here, which is encourage buildings and utilities to be designed for energy efficiency and to withstand and recover from natural disasters.
Ms. Lust, can I stop you right there? I'd like to ask the chair and apologize to the chair, but I do need to leave at this time. I believe we'll still have a quorum, and so there's no concern.
We will still have a quorum, and these topics will all be coming back to you at a future date.
Excellent, all right. My apologies to you and Ms. Lust.
You're absolutely fine, appreciate your participation.
I know the members of the public appreciate my jokes.
We all do.
Should we have a, a motion to excuse Commissioner Flynn for the rest, or is it?
I don't think we need a motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I think a head nod from the commission is probably good. All right, thank you, Commissioner Flynn. All right, any thoughts or comments on this first proposed goal?
I'd like to go back a little bit now that you were stopped.
Of course, yeah.
So, the hazard risk assessment, is that data based off of the House Bill? Or what is that data based off of?
That data is based off of... So not, not the House Bill, this was through the inter-local agreement with the county. This is like the, the team they worked with came up with this data. And I can look more into the sources for you for a future date.
Okay.
Does it make sense to look at all of these goals and policies through that lens that we're, going back a couple slides as well, that were in this inter-local agreement and that all of these, I, I guess, are these goals and policies being implemented with the idea that they, the, the hope is that those goals and policies will be adopted through? the, the, the hope is that those goals and policies will be adopted through the, through that agreement with the other entities? Or is this just, just for Ridgefield?
This is just for Ridgefield. The inter-local agreement was for that baseline data collection and analysis that produced the charts and graphs and up and down arrows we just went through. So the goals and policies are Ridgefield's. Again, we're responsible for making sure they're not inconsistent with the counties. And certainly climate issues aren't so easily bound by jurisdictional borders, right? A lot of these issues are, are pretty consistent countywide. We have had the chance to review as staff Clark County's draft climate element and don't at this time have any concerns with, with being consistent based on what they've drafted and what we've drafted so far. But it'll be our own adoption.
Understood, thank you.
I have a question in regards to, this applies to both 7.1 and 7.5, which you'll cover here shortly. And that is, it talks about natural disasters. And so how is this, how do you expect that this will be laid out in regards to, I think about earthquakes, natural disasters? And so are we going to be having kind of language and, and, and policies that speak specific to climate change? And then those that speak to other disasters that are potential, such as earthquakes? And, and duplicate language? Or would you be folding this into the other language, or?
So this element specifically is, what we have to cover is climate goals and policies. If, if we did want to add additional language about resiliency that covers other types of natural disasters, I think that would be appropriate as an addition under this umbrella.
Do we have other language that currently exists that speaks to items such as earthquakes?
No.
I, I do think we need to have some focus on that in the future. Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments on Goal 7.1? Okay, back to you.
Okay, the next one ties together climate resiliency and transportation. I should note that with all these climate goals and policies, it's, it's tough to have them just be a standalone item. They're very integrated with land use and transportation particularly. So there will, there will be a lot of cross-referencing in the final document, I think. And I think that's a good thing, to have that multi-layered goals and policies that, that do touch on separate topics. And this is a good example of that, linking together efficient transportation and climate resiliency, as well as greenhouse gas reduction. So with that, I'll, I'll turn this topic back over to you.
Ms. Lust, for 722, encourage conversion of public fleets to zero-emission vehicles. Has there been reconsiderations or considerations on, you know, recent publications talking about major cities actually reverting back away from like electric buses and stuff like that due to like fleet issues that they've had because of that?
Definitely, that does seem to be an ongoing conversation. I know even anecdotally here at the city, it's been really a lot more challenging to source zero-emission vehicles just due to the supply chain. So in which case, we've, we've been focusing on hybrid vehicles a little more versus electric recently. But yeah, that's, that's a great point, and I think something to consider moving forward with 7.2.2. Are, yeah, what are, what are the barriers there that we're starting to see?
I, yeah, I just highly, using the word encourage as well, encourage. I, I have nothing against electric vehicles. I think they're, you know, there's a lot of fantastic things about them, but when it comes to like public things, I think it's very important to think about the replacement battery cost and the, the weight that carries against the, the cities that employ them.
Any other thoughts or comments on Goal 7.2? Back to you, Ms. Lust.
All right, thank you. All right, Goal 7.3. It'd be more of a straightforward application when we think of climate resilience. Protect and restore green spaces and habitat to be resilient to natural hazards. Provide refuge to people and wildlife during extreme weather.
Any thoughts or comments from the Commission on this item? Not seeing anything, so go ahead and continue.
Okay, I'll move along then.
Oh, did you have something, Commissioner Mull next?
I just, another thing that I've noticed that is around here, and for protecting these green spaces, just something considered would be maybe an item talking about protecting and remove, like keeping an eye on invasive species and detrimental species. Like I know around our community, there's a lot of like, it's maybe an ivy or something that basically is killing off all the trees, which is, you know, they, branches fall during storms and all these things. And they're, you know, they're kind of hazard A for people, but also, you know, blocking rivers and stuff like that because of this ivy that's just choking everything off.
I would like to second that. I think that's a very good point. You know, the county, not necessarily the city, you know, regulates noxious weeds and invasive species on private property. They don't necessarily do it on public property. So I would like to see the city, you know, manage, you know, noxious weeds and invasive species on public property. That'd be awesome.
Thank you both. I'm just noting those things down.
Excellent, thank you. Any other comments on Goal 7.3? Okay, back to you.
All right, 7.4 ties into our infrastructure, particularly our city water system and its long-term sustainability. And this is very much reflective of the work our Public Works team has done to concurrently update our water capital facilities plan. Any thoughts? I'll move on.
Nothing, yeah, thank you.
All right, 7.5, we are back to resilience of the people in our community. And this is all about emergency preparedness, response, and recovery.
Ms. Lust, in, for these items, for like accessible evacuation plans, et cetera, et cetera, like is, I'm, I'm not aware. Is there, in the event of, say, there was like a, a natural disaster or, you know, one of these climate disasters, fire or something like that? Do we have like a, a meeting kind of safety place, like the gym or something like that?
Community-wide, no. I know different organizations have their own plans. The city has its own plan for, you know, how our staff would work to continue the operations of the city and support the community through a disaster. That's work we've been doing with CRESSA, the Clark Regional Emergency Services. But as far as like a community-wide plan, no. And that's, that's something that could certainly come out of this planning process is more preparedness and education to the public.
I, I, I would highly suggest, in my personal opinion, having something like that, at least something, especially with, you know, aging communities and stuff, having some kind of guidance on where they can go and stuff. So it, with, with stuff being hard to access if you're, if you're not as, you know, familiar with, you know, social media and stuff like that. If we don't have something that's public and, and available for people to know where to go, I think that's difficult. It might be nice to have some kind of, on a side note, it might be nice to have some kind of, you know, citywide, like, hey, these are people who are willing to help, you know, people out in event of a disaster, a fire, or ice storm or something like that.
Yeah, I do think you're going to see some of that on the next slide. Goal 7.6 is similar to 7.5, but leans, leans more in the direction you are talking about, Commissioner Mull next. So, yeah, if there is anything else folks want to talk about on 7.5, great, otherwise I will flip forward. Okay. So 7.6 is the final draft climate goal. And these policies do focus on protecting community health through some of that distribution of educational materials, establishing a resilience hub. Sort of that, what are we able to do as a city to, to better support the whole community through future, future challenges? Any additional thoughts?
I have a thought that, or a question that's more broad perhaps, and maybe this might actually tie back to 7.1, I'm not sure. But when we talk about climate risk, we talk about wildfires. Is there anything we can do in regards to, if, if I think about what I read on the news about areas that have a lot of wildfires in our community? We talk about buffering from structures and, and some standards that provide that are used as preventative measures. And then also, I think about frankly, like the parcel of land directly behind me, which will be in the city soon, where it's, it's, you know, it's nature. And during storms, you have lots of debris come down, and there's nothing that's, that, I think that's mandated or regulated or looked at in regards to undergrowth or just keeping, you know, fire kindling from just accumulating. So is there anything, any thoughts on those two points?
Yeah, those, certainly that type of preparation, thinking about defensible space is something we could look at fitting in one of these existing goals. Yeah, yeah, appreciate that.
On a side note, Ms. Lust, just for future reference, it looks like that slide's in the agenda packet twice.
Yeah, it is. So you could ignore V2.
I will, just in case it gets presented somewhere else.
It's just that important.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah.
Any other thoughts or comments on 7.6?
Perfect. That isn't my last slide, but should be, because we'll see it again and then end. Thank you all for your feedback. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, this will, this is your first touch. All these topics will be coming back as we continue to refine the goals and policies. And then process-wise, each of these comp plan elements will come through Planning Commission and then council for hearings before both bodies, before council ultimately gets, gets the, the final action to adopt individual elements as well as the overall comprehensive plan. So definitely have a busy few months ahead of us refining these chapters, basically. So we were able to, to bring something back to the Planning Commission at a future date. So appreciate all of your feedback. It's really helpful. Look to, to see this in front of you again. So with that, I believe I will turn it back to you, Chair Tyler. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Ms. Lust, and thank you for your presentation. Very well done. And with that, that should close our business portion of the meeting tonight. We'll move on to the second public comment period. Again, this is now the time for public comment. Anyone requesting to speak to the Commission may request to do so at this time. If you have not provided notice in advance to speak during the public comment period, please use the raised hand feature if you're on Zoom. And the clerk will send you permission to unmute your microphone so that you're able to make your comments. For the controls over the phone, press star nine for raised hand and press star six to mute and unmute. And then again, if you're in the audience, obviously you can come forward to the podium. Is there anybody wishing to make a public comment at this time? Anyone on Zoom? On the phone or in the audience? Not seeing anybody, we will close the public comment period. We'll go to staff reports.
Thank you, Chair. I have a few things for you this evening. First of all, thanks to our three commissioners who were able to make it to the tabling event before the State of the City address. It was a really good event. There are a lot of people there. We had some what the heck does Planning Commission do fact sheets to hand out. People loved them. They're on the website now, so if you go to your Planning Commission website, that should be posted. Yeah, and we'll continue thinking of, of education opportunities like that. But it was fun to talk to some, some new folks at that event. The State of the City video is online. If you haven't been able to watch it so far, I strongly encourage it. It's really well done this year. A great event between the, the video and the open house and the community awards. Really, really nice event. Let's see, a couple of community events coming up this Saturday, the April 4th, excuse me, April 1st Saturday is the Downtown Dash. So there'll be activities downtown, adult version and kiddo version of a scavenger hunt around local sites and businesses to get people on their feet. And walking around our downtown should be fun. April 19th, coming up in a couple weeks, is another fun community event, the Spring Cleanup. This is where you can take things you have been avoiding, taking to the landfill, simply dump them here in the city. And it's a fun event to volunteer at, too, if anyone is looking for a unique way to, to get engaged. You get to like man the station where you put things in a crusher, or like throw people's old phones in a dumpster. It's really quite fun. So there should be more information about that on our website, too. Different ways to participate. That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lust. We'll go to reports from the commissioners at this time. We'll start at this end, if you don't mind, Commissioner Mull next.
Well, first, thanks, Ms. Lust, for everything, the good presentation and stealing my thunder on the, the event the other day. No, it was fantastic, that we had got a lot of good feedback. I, I think it was good to see people come out and actually ask questions and be interested. So that was good. Other than that, I don't really have a whole lot. It's been crazy raising a newborn, so.
Very fair. Commissioner Levin?
I just want to thank you, Ms. Lust, for the presentation. Lots of good information in there. And then, yeah, thanks for hosting the table at State of the City. That was a fun event.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolf.
Nothing today, thanks.
Thank you. Echo, it was, it was a great event to be there at the State of the City, interact with members of the community. Next year, we might need our own drone to, you know, attract more people. I think the police were kind of dominating with their, their interactive drone presentation. But I think we still have some great conversations with members of the public to talk about what the Planning Commission does, and appreciated that. I just echo the, the Spring Cleanup. I think it's a great opportunity to volunteer to assist the community in, you know, cleaning up. And so, and it is, and I'll, I'll agree, it's, it's quite fun to do some of these things, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else either. So I believe at this time, we will adjourn the meeting. Other than that, I don't have anything else either, so I believe at this time we will adjourn the meeting.